You need a little, you know, side. Always the left, yeah. Remember then, the South Borough Council Chambers. Email got declined. And so that might be why it's not going up on that. I don't know if there was maybe something else or get it over it.
It was originally declined and I had to redo it and resend the invitation. I can try going down and try resending the invitation again.
I, yeah, I don't know. We just need, I think it's important for us to have the owl on because that's how we record it with good audio.
Because it says recording right now.
Yeah, but wait, but the owl's not on, so they're not hearing us or seeing us or anything.
Because you've got your screen on.
No, I know, but if you look at the participants, the, the normal owl thing is not on there with the camera. There it is. Okay, my bad. Now we're good. I was confused because of saying Tom Clark. Okay. Sorry, brother. My bad. Okay. All right. We're right at six o'clock. Are we, we're unmuted. Jeff, I think you're there. Could you just pop on and let us know if you can hear us to say something?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming for our public hearing on traffic downtown this evening. Oh, thank you. All those fighters in here that usually is. So thank you all for coming this evening. Before we get started, I have just a quick presentation. To kind of ground everyone on work that's happened so far and what information we have at this point in time. So I will talk through that really quickly and then I will use our sign in sheet and I'll just call off names of who would like to speak. And you'll come up and say your piece. So before we get, I'll go ahead and get started. So first I want to cover kind of history, things that have happened in the past, more recent milestones, a lot of the results that we've received over the past few months. And then we'll get into the resident input aspect where we're really looking for opinions from residents on. If there's a preference over putting traffic lights at the two intersections, roundabouts, or leave it as is. So first off, from a historical perspective, I was surprised to find out, surprised but not, that we have completed seventeen traffic studies in South Borough since nineteen eighty-five. So this is a, an ongoing issue, just to highlight some of the things that have happened, some of those studies and the result of those studies. At one point, there was a recommendation, for those of you that are in town, in town for a while, you probably remember there was a recommendation, put it in an overpass. Not sure of the specific year, but ultimately that was voted down and not supported by residents, so no action was taken. Then in two thousand and ten, Sabego Technics completed a traffic study for us, very thorough, and it was ultimately just shelved and nothing was really done with it. And in the past year, we kind of unearthed that two thousand and ten study and took the opportunity to partner with Sabego Technics again, to have that updated, to be brought current two thousand and twenty-three. And today, we're here and we're looking to do something about traffic instead of just putting this report on a shelf. Things that have happened over the past year since we unearthed that Sabego Technics report. So last August, we initially engaged with them, kind of got their commitment to go through the process to update that study. Last October, we had a public information meeting facilitated by Sabego Technics. Which for those of you who aren't aware, Sabego Technics is a traffic engineering firm. They're based in Portland or South Portland, but this is what they do. So they facilitated a, a meeting last October. I'm sure some of you were probably there and provided input at that meeting. And then we worked to finalize scope for what this new traffic study would look like. And the agreement was that we were going to focus on the Main Street corridor from Dow Highway or two thirty-six down to Norton Street. Sabego Technics went and did their thing. They came back to us in April with their updated study findings and ultimately recommending traffic lights over a roundabout. I'll speak to that a little bit more in a moment. And then in May of last year, we talked with MDOT and we learned that in order to be eligible for federal grants, which is obviously very appealing, so that we can lessen the burden on taxpayers. We had to make sure that we really flexed both the lights and the roundabout options. So we needed to have a little bit further analysis on the other option. So we went back to Sabego Technics, asked them to expand the analysis on roundabouts a little bit. And they brought that back to us in July and I was here today to listen to input from you all. This is just really quickly some information from our recent two thousand and twenty-two community opinion survey that was sent out. For the, for the purposes of updating our comprehensive plan. So this is just high level, probably not new information to anybody. One of the questions is, where are we in the next five years? And traffic congestion safety courses on there. And for the results of this past year, two thousand and twenty-two, seventy-five percent strongly agree, nineteen percent somewhat agree, pretty much everyone agrees. And it's just notable that those results are almost the same as what they were twenty years ago. So the sentiment about traffic has been consistent over the last twenty years, but I think we all know that the, the amount of traffic that they face significantly over the last twenty years. Similarly, this just kind of shows the same results, but by age group. Traffic does not discriminate by age. Everyone cares about this equally. So some of the key takeaways from this Sabego Technics study that we received in July, they confirmed a lot of things that we already knew with data and as an unbiased outside opinion. We know that speeding is problematic. We know that traffic calming is a big issue for us downtown and would be a big priority. We also know that there's a lot of traffic moving through the intersections, whether it's cars, pedestrians or bikes. And just the layout of the intersection makes moving throughout it very challenging. Poor visibility for pedestrians and pedestrians and bikers don't feel safe navigating through our downtown. Those are key takeaways and their ultimate recommendation was to pursue installing the traffic at both intersections because that provides the greatest flexibility for our community. That gives us the option to retime signals as traffic patterns grow and change. We all know that. The situation downtown is very different during the school year than during the summer, so we can potentially have some flexibility there to retime things depending on what time of year it is. Also the ability to coordinate those two lights to optimize traffic and the flow of traffic throughout. And that gives us the option to retain as many parking spaces as we can, which we know is, is, is important for folks too. And they really did not recommend the roundabout option. For the Portland and Main Street intersection, there is enough space to put a single lane roundabout. But there's no, there's not enough space for growth that we wanted to pursue a two lane or traffic volumes increase. Additionally, the roundabout option doesn't offer any opportunities for pedestrians to cross the street with cars stopped. It only offers opportunities for pedestrians to cross by yielding to car, right? The cars yielding to pedestrians rather. And at two thirty-six in Main, there actually isn't enough space to do this. So I know the question that we posed for the public hearing is a little bit odd, given recommendations I've just gone through. We still just wanted to put it all out there. So we're really focused on, we want to understand if people are even in favor of putting a light at both intersections or putting roundabouts at both intersections, which I've just also explained is really not feasible. Or would you prefer that we stay as we are and continue with the situation downtown as it is? This is just a concept plan. I'm not going to talk through, through some crazy details. This is included in the report, which is available online. This is just a schematic. This will be designed in much more detail if we move forward with this project. But this is the Portland and Main Street schematic for the simulation or light option. And then similarly for two thirty-six and Main Street diagram of the same thing. And you're welcome to look at the report online in detail if you want to read through, I don't know, fifty plus pages. You're, you're more than welcome to. Some of the long-term improvements we expected, we do install traffic light, obviously a reduction in diverted traffic through local neighborhoods. So we know, we all know that people cut through all the side streets all the time. Lights will offer a pedestrian phase where, as I mentioned before, cars would be stopped. So the little light with the guy will light up when it's time for pedestrians to cross the street. I see that as being a huge advantage for our downtown businesses. We can retain wide sidewalks in this scenario. Improved response time is one thing that I think sometimes we forget about because. We do have a fire station and our ambulances are dispatched from Norton Street. And so if traffic on Main Street is all congested and if things are all congested on the side streets, of course, that's going to affect response time. So that, that's just something that we expect to improve as well, optimize the traffic flow and increase visibility for pedestrians. And to me, speaking for myself, as the council at this point, but I think that this is really a huge, this idea of tackling our traffic issue is a huge catalyst, I think, for our community. We've got so many things in the works right now in regards to downtown revitalization, this traffic work, we're working on Town Hall. And I can just imagine, you know, if we can kind of get the traffic situation under control downtown, where pedestrians feel comfortable crossing the street and maybe parking down the street. They might feel more comfortable going to our local businesses and we might have some more staying power for those businesses as well. Lastly, from a funding perspective, I just want to talk about our partnership with MDOT. This is really big and I think really important for everyone to understand. So if this is, this project is approved by the town council, the state will fully support this project. MDOT is pretty excited. They will allow us to skip some steps in the process, skipping conceptual designs. Because they feel that the report that we already have gathered from Sabego Techniques is sufficient. So that's ultimately a bit of money and time, which is always a good thing. And then they also will advance to funding, basically move dollars up to from fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-four, again, executing this process. And the preliminary, preliminary design, so this will be kind of furthering those diagrams that I had showed previously. We expect that to be like roughly five hundred thousand dollars and there is a twenty percent match required by the town. However, that one hundred thousand dollars would be with the South Borough commitment. We would be able to fund that from our TIP fund. Which is exactly what we established the TIP fund for, was for projects. And then lastly, MDOT will partner with us a lot throughout the process. Hire a construction, construction company. Can you try to mute whoever? If everyone on mute could just, sorry, on Zoom, could just make sure they stay muted? Thank you. Okay. That kind of wraps up the work that has done to date. Information that I think is important for everyone to know. Going forward, next week, next Tuesday, the council, we will vote on whether or not we want to move forward with this project. After hearing input from residents this week at the public hearing, and we've also been receiving emails from folks that weren't able to, to attend in person. If we vote in the affirmative and we want to move forward, we'll kick off efforts with MDOT. There probably will be at least one public hearing throughout that design process that will come later. And we also intend to add a project page to our website to keep everyone in the loop on what's happening. All right, that's kind of my dump on you of information for this public hearing. Before we jump into the public hearing, just some basic rules of order. We have a smaller group than I expected this evening, so everything should be, work, work just fine. But if you would like to speak, if you would sign in, the sign in sheet is still over here. If you haven't signed in, go ahead and do that, that. I will, if there, if you didn't sign in, I'll call on people who haven't signed in at the end. Come up to the podium, state your name and address. Everyone will be given one opportunity to speak. We will set a timer for three minutes. And I think we should be wrapped up at nine P M., but if we're not, we'll shut down at nine P M. And we won't be taking any questions. If anyone tries to disparage counselors, residents, et cetera, I will utilize this gavel. So we can go ahead and get started. So where are my sign in sheets? Did everyone wants to be to the R C? All right. So up first, we have Alita Galvin.
Hi there.
I'm Alita Galvin, forty-six Beaver Dam Road. I just first want to say thank you for finally tackling this. I have lived in town my whole life. I grew up in downtown and this has been a mess since I was a kid. It's really encouraging to see you all taking this on very seriously and I appreciate it. I would definitely be in favor of lights over roundabouts. I first saw someone say that on Facebook and I was like, are you people crazy or what? There's no room to do this safely here. I appreciate that you guys are doing that. I do have a little bit of concern about the dual lights. I'm kind of hoping if you, they are programmed right, that would work correctly, but if they were not, I could see that being an even worse problem than what we have now. But I also want to point out, I know there's been a lot said about side streets downtown. And I know that there is no technical bypass to downtown. However, I live in Old Mill Estates and people use our neighborhood and Agamanic Estates as they bypass all the time. And they use our neighborhood and quite frankly, Aggie Estates as a speedway on their way through to bypassing downtown. So if you guys don't mind keeping us in mind when you're making your plans as the impact of these two neighborhoods, because there are quite a few kids, quite a few residences out there that are feeling the impact of this.
Thank you. Dave Bradley.
Hi, my name is Dave Bradley, Emory's Bridge Road. I'm going to skip over a section of this because you've addressed about all the traffic studies that have been done. So that gives me, it was two minutes and fifty-five seconds. So. I've read that some people don't care to hear, hear how long you've lived in South Borough. Well, I'm going to tell you that I've lived in South Borough for fifty years. Downtown, downtown traffic, parking and overall logistics have been an issue as long as I can remember. Also in that time span, the town, the town population has increased by four thousand residents. So here we are again, another traffic study. There are many layers of downtown traffic besides traffic flow. A few examples are delivery trucks parked on Main Street creating one lane traffic. Tractor trailers on Portland Street having to get in the right-hand lane to make a left-hand turn on the Main Street and still clip the island. Wide loads squeezing between the island and vehicles parked on Portland Street by odd fellows. A lot of things look good in print or on a computer. Until you actually test it, you really don't know if it's going to work. If the town wants a rotary, I suggest the town finds a large empty parking lot, lay out the rotary with cones. And get the townspeople, police, fire, local trucking, public works, vehicles towing trailers or whatever to test it. If the town suggests traffic lights, set up portable traffic lights in town and see if there's any improvement in traffic flow. One thing to think about is any improvement to traffic flow will also invite more GPS traffic. Of the twenty-five intersections in Maine that had the most crashes in two thousand and twenty-one, the top three were all roundabouts. Sanford was number three with a hundred and one. I am concerned that lights or a roundabout will urge people to drive faster. We all know that yellow means step on it. For the last fifty years, the town has not made any changes to downtown traffic, other than a police officer directing traffic every now and then. In closing, many people moved to South Borough for that small town feel. A rotary of lights or lights will change that forever. Spectually submitted Dave Bradley.
Hi, Brett Prop, thirty-four Liberty Street. For all the opinions I've seen online, I'm just surprised that there aren't more people here.
Really?
I guess I shouldn't be surprised, but people do, yeah. But just to be quick, I am a proponent of traffic signals. I think Alita mentioned earlier, it's, we just need to be cognizant of how it's going to impact side streets. I think it could alleviate some of the issues that have been seen on Norton, but it could also divert traffic through the young. Parents Sewell and then also Academy as people try to bypass two lights. So I know in Berwick, they have speed bumps with a lot of the cut through streets. So it may be worth reaching out to Berwick and seeing if that's effective or if they think it's effective. These types of things are hard to measure, how people are using side streets, but it's certainly something to keep an eye on. And just in general, for calming traffic, I think the lights will help, but I think there are other solutions that are also more, they're cheaper and are also been shown to be effective. I think what I saw in the presentation were bump outs for pedestrian crossings and also on right-hand turns, which really slow people down as they round the corner in front of a leaf rank. I know that people can turn, go pretty fast around there and it's difficult for the pedestrians that are trying to cross there. So these are pretty easy solutions that just take concrete and a little bit of engineering, but it doesn't take a whole traffic light. And other than that, I think that we should consider having a transportation advisory committee. I know that Dover has one and it could be worth having a group of people. I'd be willing to volunteer if others aren't interested, but it'd be nice to have people that are interested in. Volunteering to monitor these issues going forward. To see how it could potentially impact or what other issues could arise and then gathering, you know, opinions and what people have seen from the public and sort of consolidating it, bringing it, bringing it to you guys, the potential solutions. So, thank you.
Ken Goel. No, okay. And then Cliff.
Well, just to put it clearly, it tends to mean, so I am seventh generation here in South Borough. Been driving the streets since I was fifteen and I hate to say it, I'm seventy-nine years old now. And I understand that traffic is a big problem. But South Borough is the gateway to Maine. And I don't know if this traffic will add work. My only concern is that a, a business for parking will not be harmed that much. Other than that, if we have it, I hope to God it works.
Okay, so that wraps up the names that I had that had signed in. Is there anyone who didn't sign in that would like to speak? Yeah, go ahead. If you would just come up and state your name and address. We can grab the mic, can we?
Hello, handicapped. Parkinson's disease. But my name is Jim Howell. Eleven fourteen Quarry Drive, South Borough. And I think the Hagens and I are probably the longest term residents in South Borough. So we're the original Old Mill carpet makers. My grandkids live across the street and my son and daughter live across the street. My daughter lives on Old Pharaoh's Road. An old mill, we're going through the third generation. I think, just, just with an eyesight in my house. There are fifteen young kids riding bikes right now. Delightful. When you're old and you're super young. That also speaks well of the community that our wife and I and my friends have devoted a lot of community service to. So I'd ask you to consider that right now. They go forty, forty-five miles an hour up the hill. When there's Xavier traffic going through Old Mill in the morning, especially in the summer, they take it as shortcut. The ways will even direct you up to Upriss Sands are the ways to get around. I mean, it's a crazy situation. Beyond that. I'm aware of the various traffic studies I've participated in, so. I want to speak negatively about the efforts. But I hope you look at those. As far as the scenario I prefer you prefers traffic lights or roundabouts. One of those, but a no change is not acceptable if one can be devised. However, during the old days, when I was the first a carpet banker, I served on a couple of. MDOT commissions for Governor McCurnan. And I know a lot about trucks. One, the roads come in from the Borough and Sanford area. That's a defense highway. You cannot eliminate trucks from the highway, so it has to be considered. The turn radius of fifty-eight foot trailer with a long nose truck is a minimum of sixty-five feet. With a white house on it, is seventy-two feet. So that's pretty, pretty significant as far as a roundabout. In fact, it should be bigger than the one in. In fact, it should be bigger than the one in Stanford. Which I go up the mountain like a lot and it's something to acquire. But that's a fact that you realize you can only eliminate those trucks. That's why down by the town dump, they put those signals in there. They can photograph them when they're trying to avoid the weigh section. Most truckers don't try to avoid them. Because they know they're going to find. But the, uh. The ones that do are basically independents that are either overweight or have an unbalanced load. And if they come down and have an unbalanced load, that's the most dangerous truck on the road. So those are things to consider. The reality to deal with diverted traffic. What maize, in Kettering, I used to have a business, maize will drive you all over town. It's amazing how accurate it is. I've come up from New York City. Get off the, uh, Route fifteen, it's taken me through some small towns I've never seen. Uh, keep looking down and the traffic's backed up. Oh, there's an accident and it pushed me down, ways. Almost six states, what's going on, no matter what you want to do. So those are the things that I ask you to consider and good luck. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for the good luck.
All right, um, anyone, any other stragglers that would like to speak? Um, or anyone who joined late? Well. Thank you all for, for joining us this evening. I'm, I'm laughing because I'm surprised by, uh, the, the lower turnout, but, um. Thank you all for coming. Um, this is a, um, a big effort for us and, uh, the council will be, as I mentioned, will be voting next week as to how we want to proceed on this item. So, um, feel free to, um, for anyone, uh, listening to the reporting, uh, feel free to send us emails. Um, I'm making this up right now as I speak, but I think we're welcome, we're open to receiving emails through next Monday, the twenty-fifth. Um, if anyone would like to send us emails with their thoughts on this as well, they will be considered. All right. Yeah.
Just one thing. So along with the good luck, MDOT has agreed to. Move forward to this on an expedited schedule. They have also let us know because South Borough has done this not once, not twice, but a couple of times with main department transportation. That this is pretty much our last turn in the barrel. So if we decide to say no now. No time in most of us' time in this town will we see a light there. So not that we're under the gun, but we need to really make sure we make this decision, we make it right. But this is our one shot with MDOT to get it in the books, get it done. Because again, they're sticking their neck out for South Borough one more time and that's pretty much what we have. So just in case, we need it, we need it by the twenty-fifth. Because we're going to make a decision one way or the other. Next Tuesday night. So, thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you all for coming. Thanks for everyone who joined on Zoom. Um, this recording will be posted online, um, probably sometime tomorrow and, um, thank you all for coming out this evening.
Brett, really?